Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. I'd like to call this meeting over and ask that everybody stand and collect. I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would like to motion to approve the minutes of the December 1st, 2022, regular meeting of Board of Education. So, on Ellen. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. I'd like to open it up, or comments on agenda items only. If any member of the public would like to make a comment on the agenda, now is the time. Okay. No problem. I would like to motion to accept, approve, or authorize the consent agenda items as they appear on the agenda. Dory and Tom. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Leach for reports from the administration.
Well, Happy New Year, everyone. Just a few updates from our school building, as well as Albany. The governor was sworn into office Sunday in her own remarks. She had the side knee to address affordability challenges in the state legislature. Again, it's 2023 legislative session on Wednesday. We believe that she has a deadline about February 1st to share, as the governor, the exacted budget, so we're hopeful we'll have that for our work session in February as we continue the budget process. Wasn't 100% clear when she would be sent. There is an unknown if the new budget director has yet to been appointed for the state, so we're just curious about that potential things up. Senate Majority Leader Andrea Stewart-Cutton spoke about education in her opening remarks, saying that they'll continue to fight for increased funding, modernize infrastructure, staffing, resources. In addition, she mentioned the investment in pre-K services, which also we'll talk about later, as opposed to our visit with the center globally. Pre-K services for working families and talked a little bit about the state working through the expanded foundation aid and lieu of the lawsuit that's sort of come to fruition now and fully funding schools. The, interestingly, which is aligned, I think, with the district's goals. In early 2019, the New York State Board of Regents announced the creation of the Blue Ribbon Commission on Graduation Measures, where the Board of Regents was going to look at the pathway to graduation and reexamine what those requirements are. So, the committee has 70 individuals, and they're now at a point where they've released feedback through Thought Exchange, which is like a survey that's available to the public. So, we're hoping for pathways to open up that are less traditional, less standardized, and more aligned with a portion of the graduates, so students can truly follow a passion and an interest to still meet the graduation requirement. So, that's pretty significant, given the state's long history with more or less traditional Regents exams and attritional pathways. Moving on to the, just enough to answer the schools in San Antonio. Our leadership club has been active throughout the year, from poems to cards being sent, ornaments to local nursing homes, videos, you name it, supporting the Toys and Tots Drive, et cetera. They're pretty excited about that as they move into the holiday season. The drama club there is rehearsing for a performance of Jungle Book Kids, which they, you know, will happen in the spring, and the school is holding their step fair on January 18th. So, they're excited about that. Additionally, at Park Step Fair, planning is taking place there, sponsored by the PTA. Students are working through the engineering design process there, or the scientific method, either work to solve problems and explore observations. The PTA has held two virtual health sessions to assist students in developing ideas and answering questions for the event. They will make, they're on a model lamp station, and awards will be for first, second, and third place winners. There's also an opportunity for students participating in the district-wide steam fair, which has helped high school and day. So, a lot to look forward to there. Over at the middle school, the, you probably remember us, we were talking about a few months ago, Sweethearts and Heroes, so they're going to be visiting on January 17th and 18th there to work with small groups of students. So, retired Army Sergeant, who's a founding member of that organization, will speak to the students about his experiences in Iraq and the impact that had on his life. Tom Murphy, in fact, and Pat Fish will also lead small groups in the practice of circle when they learn that practice the last time there was a visit, which aims to provide a safe and supportive environment for the kids to really share ideas, build trust, connections, et cetera. Ribbon Week will be hosted at the middle school and high school this year, with preparations already underway there, and the guitar club has been rehearsing since October, and will have a concert coming up on February 3rd at the middle school. That's a long-standing tradition that we all know at the middle school, and kids are real excited about, as well as the formality. This year, the New York State assessments in grade three through eight will be conducted on a computer base, so that is now a requirement. We started to implement that. Last year, we had it full rotation, so we have been doing some simulations to prepare students to use that medium, but things are going well there. And lastly, at the high school, Mr. Auburnides and Mrs. Fusco, the principal, met with members of the SAG and the War Prevention Coalition to discuss public service announcements, and particularly a contest on topics such as bullying, alcohol use, drug use, vaping, smoking. Thus far, 40 students are participating in the contest, and they're creating 30-second videos on their chosen topic. The winning teams will be announced in February. Additionally, on January 23rd, the middle school and high school administration are working together with the Warwick Valley Prevention Coalition and the Warwick Valley Police Department, and will host a forum on the dangers of fentanyl, a certainly, as we all know, a popular opioid found too frequently, unfortunately, and access to all adolescent throughout the country. On January 10th, students, we participated in, lastly at the high school, in senior project announcement, who was originally scheduled right before the holiday recess, but because the weather was precarious, we canceled our, we got a keynote speaker coming from a distance, and that keynote speaker is NBC reporter Pat Battle, right, Pat Battle? So, she's coming again. She's promising to come around, and that's next week, so we're looking forward to that. So, that's just a little overview of what's been taking place over the past few weeks. Thank you very much, and Happy New Year, everybody.
Thanks, thank you, Dr. Leach. Okay, reports from the Board of Education. Advocacy, local care fund, AIN, OCSBA, NISBA. I have the update on the meeting with Senator Scoopis, does there anything with OCSBA and his folks before we get to that?
It's the OCSBA meeting.
In OCSBA, we're going to be doing a virtual meeting next week on the 10th. The thrust of that is the, talking about extending the meal program in the schools, the free meal program, the school advocated for that, and then we'll be back in person in February.
Okay, thanks, officer. In response to our discussion at the last meeting, we were set up a meeting with Senator Scoopis, Dan Mahoney, Bill Faddis, Dr. Leach, and myself. Met with Senator Scoopis on Friday afternoon to talk about a few things, but first of all, first and foremost, we were talking about the vaccine mandate that always keeps popping up and we keep hearing about, and he's, he was very direct on this, and he said, although he is a supporter of vaccines, he would not be supportive of any requirement that would pre-reform, basically, you'd have to go to school, and you got a vaccine, you don't go to school. So, he was very, very direct, that he would not be supportive of that mandate. He actually used the term, "This is a non-issue," in spite of the fact that these bills keep getting reintroduced into the state legislature. Later, he said that over 10,000 bills were introduced per session, and most of them don't make it out of committee, and he said this one would probably never even make it out of committee. He actually used the term, "This should never see the light of day." So, from our standpoint there, we were able to go and get some direct information from someone who's, you know, would be definitely be representing us and also, so. Before I get into the other things we spoke about, is there any questions on that?
No, I do have one comment, because I thought Senator Scoopis, like you said, was very direct. I appreciated that he reiterated something during the virtual meeting that we had with the masking. He discussed lockdowns, if you remember.
Yeah, yeah, he did talk about that.
So, I got it down, and he said, "When the history books are written," and he said this in the meeting, if you remember, it would be a paraphrase, not the exact thing, but he said, "When the history books are written, lockdowns of schooling children will be proven to be a terrible decision." And he acknowledged the fact that part of that decision was out of the control of the legislature. That was more of your administrative state folks up in Albany making poor decisions for the kids, and mostly administrators. So, I think it's important to recognize that if something like that ever happens again, we should stand there around, and so should folks like Senator Scoopis, because we see how devastating it's been on many levels.
Thanks, Bill. We also did talk about a couple of other topics. We did put in a request with Senator Scoopis for some aid. They have access to some aid, and we were looking to use that aid for some of the projects that we're doing in-house here in order to help fund them and complete them. We talked about, we spoke about universal pre-K. He's very much a proponent of this, and he said they would be continuing the program and expanding the funding for that. What that means, we're not sure. What we did say is that it will never be fully funded, there will always be a different component to paying for that, but they are going to continue that program. We also did speak about the state fully funding foundation aid, which should continue, and we also did bring up issues that we have here at Warwick with the state aid formula, because our constituents pay a greater proportion of our school budget than any other school in the region. So, where he was focusing more on the geography of where we, as a county Y, in relation to New York City and how much money we think we're getting, we were focusing more on things that skew things like the wealth index and how much, you know, we don't get in relation to comparable districts in our region. So, you know, will anything happen with that? You know, probably not, but it's nice to, you know, get our voices heard and say that, you know, the Warwick taxpayers pay more than their share than every other school district in the area. And that's, you know, and a couple of the conversation into, you know, a couple of other things, and why taxes are so high in some of the, you know, the capital projects and some of the others that are now going down because people are kind of, you know, saying, "All right, you have this BOSI's project come up, now we got to pay that, and now you're asking for more money for another capital project." So, you know, we're definitely, you know, advocating on behalf of our taxpayers. So, does anybody have any questions on this?
Just, I, you know, I appreciate the context for him as our new senator, understanding not just the county, but where we stand in terms of things like our wealth index and the challenges we particularly face as Warwick within Orange County, so that, that's awesome context for him, I think.
And he's very excited to represent Warwick. This is an area which he has never, even as a city, even as state assembly, that he's never represented. He did have the Chester Park in the county, but he has never had down here, so he's very interested in getting, make a little bit more involved in some of the things, so we can invite him to some things and get him involved, as we've had some of our other senators. Moving on to audit. I made it up. Do you want to give you an idea of the chair that was your partner, but you had to leave for a panel?
I came to the event today for the meeting to discuss the external monitors. The fiber contract expired, so we did an RFP, or RFP, excuse me, and we looked at the firms that applied, and I think the board decided to continue with the same rule we had last week.
Yeah, so on next month's agenda, we will have a proposal for the new house, again, correct?
Correct. That was the lowest bid.
That was the lowest bid.
Facilities?
We haven't had a, we haven't had one.
Policy? On Thursday, you mean on Thursday? The policy meeting is Thursday. Health and Wellness Committee?
I was very happy to hear Dr. Leach's report, because our December meeting was canceled due to precarious weather, so I really don't have any update with Dr. Leach, but I wanted to contribute, so thank you very much.
Sure, and I know our, in district, our committee met this week, I wasn't in attendance, and Mrs. Leandro facilitated that. Perhaps you want to share something a little bit about how that meeting went, and what were the topics that were discussed?
Sure, so actually, yesterday, we convened the Health and Wellness Committee to discuss some really interesting topic, tired teens, and we focused on sleep and how to best approach healthy sleep hygiene habits in our students, and then we talked as a group about how we could disseminate the information out to whether it's teachers in the building, administrators to guidance, the PPS office. So, just to summarize, topics discussed at the meeting included recommendations for the number of hours of sleep our students need to connect based on their ages, consequences that could occur if those sleep needs are not met, I was not aware of the fact that the circadian rhythms change based on the ages of your children, and overall tips we can do to promote healthy sleeps, sleeping habits. And the information reinforced prior knowledge of sleep needs while highlighting a few correlations that can adversely affect students. For example, there is an increased correlation between increased risk for obesity accidents and injuries when students are sleep deprived, probably adults too, we focus more on students. And then we focused on all the ways schools could promote healthy sleep habits, and some of them were to make sure we discuss this in health class, which we do have students, these are just ideas. Utilize a sleep diary, make sure that parents can be informed about the importance of healthy sleep. This was a really interesting one. Try to make your homework deadlines be not 11:59 PM, because that will get kids procrastinating, try to get a minute, stay up till midnight to get that one minute for midnight. Provide electronic guidelines in general, for example, being on a screen or a cell phone at night, there's a light that the phone emits, or even an iPad that actually adversely affects your ability to fall asleep easily. And assess for sleep deprivation when counseling students about behavior issues or even preparing IDPs. And finally, try to help teachers possibly coordinate schedules so that the tests don't all fall on the same day, because students will often stay up late studying for three tests if they're all on Friday. So, those were some of the little takeaways from our wellness meeting, and then we actually needed two meetings and one. At the end of the meeting, then Miss McGordy asked to come in and facilitate a session, which was an abbreviated version of the overall mental health of the district that we had a work session on, the Thirteenth of L, and she did an overall recap for the members of the wellness committee. So, that was our meeting.
Well, my sleep diary, my golden doodle got up at 11:45 PM last night, woke us up, woke me up. I had to take care of it, so this morning, there was a conversation with the thing, what, you know, what's the deal with the golden doodle? It's got to go out. Well, you know, so how do we come up with something, the situation with the dog's not waking you up at midnight, and that's where, that's where my diary is right now, that's me, I'm standing there saying, "What are we going to do with this dog?" And I don't know what to do with it, but, so I got less rent, I got less...
You got less room, you got less stuff.
Deep, or whatever.
I know.
But let me aside, it's an important topic. And, you know, and, and as kids, their patterns are crazy sometimes, you know.
Well, I was wondering if there's an additional conversation in the tired teens about the delaying start time for high schoolers?
We did, we did push the subject and shared that the tricky part with that involves the fact that so many of our students are doing after-school things, like sports and clubs and, you know, you name it here, and so especially think about, somebody mentioned right now, we're trying to even, we're losing daylight, or there's still a little daylight by 4:30, and then someone else mentioned, of course, that it's also difficult because within a county, there's other schools that are involved in these things, so you can't have one school that's starting at one time, and then the other school, the other 10 schools are, you know, starting at other times. So, like, for example, with athletics, those are all scheduled within a county, so that did come up.
It's a difficulty, but especially as you, the data continues to tie along on the benefit, actually, to physical health benefits to start later, and that it's physiological circadian shift, at some point, it seems like, I'm hoping, there is enough of a shift that it's something that's uncounted by, obviously. It's hard for us to do an isolation of that just for, I mean, when you bring up data showing that these, that kids are, or basically they have more accidents.
Yeah, I was wondering what these, I mentioned, they said with obviously sleep deprivation, accident, or least, there were other things too. It's like huge, it's a major thing.
And she had some childcare issues as well.
Yes, yes.
Particularly our school care. All those things.
Will this be disseminated across a broader audience? Because now they say, "A prophet is no good in his own town." And I probably try and talk to my kids at home about not using a pair of phone after 8 o'clock. It's like, it falls on their fears.
Well, in the health class, of course, they do touch on this, and I'm sure, I'm sure that's a newer thing.
I know they're working on the press release about kids as well.
Plus, the principals who attended the meeting and the building level administrators all have access to this, so we just had a meeting yesterday, they're going to kind of help these too. We always start with something bigger, and they say, "I need turnkeyness to your staff." So, they're probably thinking about that.
Good idea.
Well, we would look into this in depth about, what, 12 years ago, 15 years ago, and actually shift, and actually shifted to high schools start by half an hour, you know, to a later time, but because of bus schedules, because of the afternoon, and especially because of making the older kids home first for the younger siblings, you know, it's, it's very complicated situation.
And even to that respect, if you have a situation where, you know, kids are able to sleep later, that doesn't necessarily mean they're going to bed.
They're staying there on their cell phone.
They're going to stay there later, and it fundamentally gets down to cutting or better organizing the workload, because if you have four hours of homework, and you're just doing that four hour, you just started two hours later, if you start, if you start school two hours later, everything just get pushed, the kids are going to bed later, it's not helping them out.
But Keith, sorry to be the scientist, that's the point of this circadian shift. They physiologically cannot fall asleep earlier, like, we, that's the point of this whole circadian shift. They, like, you can't, you can't force them to say, "Go to bed earlier, you'll wake up earlier." They physiologically should shift, it's more difficult. So, it's not like we can just coerce them to change their physiology.
Yeah, well, I agree with you, because when you're shift work, or kids sleep higher, that's always a challenge, because your sleep patterns are often, like, kids, they're always out of line.
Right, and there's another data to show that, I mean, they have...
Hey, listen, both my kids take classes in college, 8 o'clock in the morning, they complain about them, and I tell them, "You better get there." Man, intuition, you better get there, so.
Somehow you may, so, however it goes.
But it's all good discussion, and all, all failure points, so we'll make sure that it's considered internally, have some discussions, how to operationalize some of the findings and the research and discussions during the meeting, but also I know that we're working on press releases about it as well, so it's important, it's very, very important.
It's good to hear.
Cindy, what's the makeup of the health and wellness?
The committee's pretty giant. It has teachers, a community member or two, however we can make it, of course, and administrators, our nurse, PPS admin, other social office admin, who else was there? It's really...
Is Frankie from Coalition on it?
Frankie?
Yeah, from Coalition Francesca.
No, no, we should extend the invitation, it's a great idea. You can do that.
We're already working on the next session, believe it or not, but I'm not going to tell you the topic, I'm going to keep it a secret, but I will invite Frankie.
Great. Okay, moving on, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Leach for the recommendation from the superintendent of school.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel and CIC agenda that's lit and bill. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried, thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. I would like a motion to authorize the Assistant Superintendent for Business to transfer funds as they appear on the agenda. Dory?
Second.
And Tom? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement by between the Warwick Valley Central School District and the Warwick Valley Teachers Association, as it appears on the agenda. So, move. Bob?
Second.
And Lynn? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve the resolution to establish the sport of girls' flag football for the Warwick Valley Central School District, and to create a varsity girls' flag football team effective for the spring to 2023 athletic season. Dory? And, and Tom? Any discussion?
Did the council actually provide some funds?
I'm assuming, right?
Do you have any money for the playoff run?
I was going to say, the Jets have a lot of talent.
Are you sure? But the Jets cannot have our flag football quarterback.
No, no.
Get their own quarterback.
I guess that's all.
They do have a year.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve the resolution to send a letter to local senators, assembly representatives, and the Honorable Captain, the Honorable Governor of the State of New York requesting the COVID-19 vaccine to continue to be an option for our families to decide with their healthcare provider, not a legal requirement for entry into schools, and authorize the Board President to execute the letter on behalf of the Board of Education. Dory? And Bill? Any discussion?
Just that I think it's, it'll be good that we've done this now, that we'll be versed in the Orange County, and now we can advocate to OCSBA, as well, just to ensure that, you know, options are important, and, you know, the governor should know where we stand.
Will you bring this up explicitly?
I will.
And like I said to Senator Scoopis, you know, the religious exemption is done away with it, we didn't find out about that at all up until the point where it was done, so getting this out now before anything really happens for the state's community. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve a field trip for the Warwick Valley High School wire fire students to travel to the Majestic Theater in New York, New York on Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, to see the musical Phantom of the Opera, pending the submission of all required in. Then? Second. Bob? And Bob? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve the revised Warwick Valley High School senior class trip to Virginia on Thursday, April 20th, 2023, through Saturday, April 22nd, 2023, pending the submission of all required in. Dory? Second. And Bob? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. And the, the original trip we approved back in September, but it was, had to be adjusted to the popularity of the trip, so the kids are going... to popularity of the trip, so the kids are going, they had to adjust it, which is great.
Which is really nice, because the Jets, that senior ship, had seemed to have been on the heat line.
Yeah, it's great, so. Sixty-one, is it? That's the highest number we've had. I would like a motion to approve a field trip for the Warwick Valley Middle School Orchestra, Chorus, and Band students to travel to Six Flags Great Adventure in Jackson Township, New Jersey, and Neptune High School in Neptune, New Jersey, to participate in the Trills and Thrills Music Festival on Friday, June second, twenty twenty-three, pending the submission of all required.
So move.
Dory?
Second.
And Tom? Any discussion? All in favor? I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Any, I was reading, any opposed? Motion is carried. All right, does anybody have any old business that they would like to discuss?
I, I do, but first, a little sidebar, I think, seeing what's going, I want to thank the Jets for changing my quarterback.
Bob, I tell everyone the lesson, the Jets won Super Bowl, was Rangers made out of wood. I'm a Citroen.
I'm a Masscat, too, but.
So speaking of old business or old times, the effect in our committee meetings, or an hour and a half ahead of our regular meeting, instead of the old standard of one hour. And the one hour back from the time before the printing press was, you know, discovered worked very well, so I'd like to know why we are now doing this hour and a half beforehand. I mean, tonight, we were done at six o'clock, which is a little bit unusual, but a number of these meetings that I've attended, and we, you know, so you got at least half an hour of dead time, and it, you know, I work till five o'clock usually, so it's very difficult for me to come in by thirty, so anyway, so why are we doing an hour and a half ahead of the old standard of a network?
I think that the, I'll answer the why in a second. I think that it certainly can be adjusted based on the scope of the agenda, and was being discussed in nature of the committee. I know that we moved to an hour and a half, as we had some committees that were doing extensive work around pretty complex, difficult topics, whether it was quite a few board policies to digest, and board members preferred not coming weekly or bi-weekly, or, you know, the disruption of their schedule, or it was multimillion-dollar capital projects, or multimillion-dollar federal-funded work, where extensive time was needed with architects and engineers who were traveling three, four hours to see us, that we really felt that, we felt rushed at times for some pretty important discussions, and wanted to make sure we had the time to digest the richness of some of that material that was something that's foreign to us, and many of us aren't engineers and architects. But nevertheless, I think, you know, it sounds like tonight, for the Audit Committee, it was a fairly light agenda, and in retrospect, that could have been started later, but it's on the school agenda, so I can work with Tim, my colleague, so that we do a better job making sure that, you know, waste of people's time, they're here too long.
Great, okay.
Before we do that, I just want to bring up one thing. We have a work session scheduled for the nineteenth, which is pretty much going to be a budget presentation, but we're still waiting on a majority of the information, and a lot of things we're really going over are speculative at this point in time, given we don't have the state runs and stuff like that, would everybody, okay, kind of doubling up on, you know, going with more of a full budget presentation, February work session, and we're going to the one next week? I'm sorry, two weeks? You don't have to have a motion, it's the work session, but, you know, you can just cancel it on the, like, the word out there, do a full, full budget one next time.
I think so.
Okay, perfect. Any other time? Okay, comments from residents? Any resident would like to make a comment? Now is the time to do it. Okay, so we're gonna adjourn the meeting. I would like a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'd like to ask our, Lynn and Dory, I'll handle it.
I just want to say, keep, like, practice, that's a record.
No, no, no.
Forty-five minutes?
Twenty-two minutes.
Charlie was eighteen.
Bob had to sit him on longer than this meeting, too.
Maybe, maybe, maybe in my tenure.
I got some salt, you know, I got some salt, we went up to the moon.
Maybe in my tenure, I'm sure I'd be here one year.
In my tenure, this lady. Poor Tim's gonna get screamed at tomorrow, so.
You know, well, I might have, I might have had shorter ones, but I had substitute for Sharon.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But like, in my tenure, I think this is probably already one of the shortest.
I don't know, I, John will, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I'm gonna call it, any discussion? No, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion, motion is carried. Thank you, everybody, I'm afraid I can't open.
Megan, what do you think was happening?